All right, almost six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. This is a regular city council member. This is a regular city council meeting. Due to ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our city council meeting. It's much different than we usually do. Due to the safety of the staff, safety of the council, and safety of the public. Now, I would like to ask our city manager, give a brief explanation to the public. Thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders. And as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N29-20, which allows for the deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit. Unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take live comments first, and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak. And should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do at in-person meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, and their line is unmuted. But doing so is not required. Attendees should also see a lower-hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. And Mayor, that concludes my comments on that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the meeting in order. Tina, may I have your own call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Mr. Campion.
He motioned here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please stand up for the silent prayer, and I also would like to ask ongoing council member Paige Lamson lead us on the pledge of allegiance today.
Do the silent prayer first?
Yes.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tina, please read the plea statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cablecast on Mitchell Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmitzalkable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 5th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from the Sacramento Central Library.
Thank you. Next agenda item is November 3rd, 2020 election results. Subject: Certification of November 3rd, 2020 General Municipal Election Result. Ms. Hubert.
Okay, we are adopting a resolution certifying the election results of the November 3rd, 2020 General Municipal Election. The certificate of facts was received late this afternoon and sent via email to you prior to the city council meeting. It will also be posted on the website tomorrow morning. There are two open seats, both with four-year terms ending 2024. The candidates were Jay Vandenberg, Kevin Papino, Kami Martin, Randy Morton, and Keith Jones. Jay Vandenberg received 5,082 votes, Kevin Papino 4,241 votes, Kami Martin 3,127 votes, Randy Morton 2,240 votes, and Keith Jones 1,635 votes. For city treasurer, Sean L. Farrell received 8,763 votes. And for city clerk, Tina Hubert received 8,751 votes.
Tina, there's the report, right?
For me?
Did you finish the report?
Yes.
All right, any council member want to make any comment, any question?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Why is, let me open for public comment. Any, anybody on a public comment, any written comment you receive?
There are no public comments on the attendee side, no raised hands.
And no written comments on this item.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor, and make a motion.
Actually, I think Councilman Farmer had his hand up.
Yeah, Councilman.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano. I just wanted to just quickly say that congratulations to the new candidates, to the new council members, and also to our city clerk and our treasurer. And I want to thank the other candidates who ran their campaigns, and it takes a lot to run a campaign, as we all know. It's hard on your life, takes a lot of time, and you have to really have a love for the community to do it. So I thank all of them for their attempt and trying to serve their community. That's all I had.
Thank you. So Vice Mayor Lozano, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution certifying the election results of the November 3rd, 2020 General Municipal Election.
I'll second.
Motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Before we move to the next agenda item, I would like to thank you, the council member Paige Lamson. She did three years as a council member and one year as a mayor. That's a service to the community, her time and dedication, I really appreciate you. Same thing Kurt Campion. He was eight-year council member, and I appreciate, and we appreciate his service to the community. And eight-year dedication and spend his time. Thank you very much. Any other council member want to make any comment? Councilmember Farmer.
Yes, I just wanted to echo the same thing that Mayor Sandu said. I want to thank you, Paige, for your service for years. I know it's very difficult, and it takes a lot to serve, so I thank you for that. And Kurt, your eight years, to spend eight years in this office, I can only imagine what it takes to do that. So I appreciate your time in the council and your, you know, the knowledge and expertise that you brought to the council was very helpful for the new, those of us that were new coming in. And for all your service to the City of Galt. So thank you both to you, and I wish you guys success back in civilian life.
Thank you. We can have a couple of minutes, like a pause, and then we can go to next agenda item.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of sentences here. Thank you, Paige, for your service, your four-year service on council, and certainly your year as mayor is leading us, and your passion for kids in the community, and quite honestly, everybody in the community, but a real passion for our youth and your service to the Youth Commission. And then, and then, Councilmember Campion, thank you for your eight years on council. And certainly your service to the community before that, but your leadership at these last couple of years and expertise has really provided us some good guidance, and want to thank you, thank you both, and I'm sure we'll see you around.
Thank you. So take about a couple of minutes, we can move to the next agenda. So, Mr. Heinz, we are ready to move to the next agenda item, right?
I believe so.
Give me one minute here to make my change here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just, I'm ready, you can go ahead and.
All right, next agenda item, see, reorganization of the Galt City Council. Ms. Hubert. Oath of the Office and Reorganization of Galt City.
Okay, I was, oh, there he is. Okay, we got him both up. Okay, the first what we're going to do is administer the oath of office to the Galt City Council members-elect. So if Councilmember Papino and Councilmember Vandenberg raise a right hand. And repeat after me. I instate your name. I'm you. There you go.
I, Kevin Papino.
I, Jay Vandenberg.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am a member of the Galt City Council.
As I am a member of the Galt City Council.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of council member.
Of the position of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And both of you do have your oath of office in front of you, so you can sign since we're via Zoom, so you're official.
Thank you. Congratulations, both of you, to part of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tina, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Sean.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Present.
And Councilmember Papino.
Here.
All right, thank you. And next agenda item is by city manager, Mr. Heinz.
Actually, Mayor, well.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandu, you present to Councilmember Lozano.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, first of all, again, congratulations of the new council member. And this is my opportunity to recognize Vice Mayor Rachel Lozano was appointed Vice Mayor December 3rd, 2019. I appreciate his insightful analytical approach to council deliberation and his steadfast dedication to ensuring the community voice always heard in such matters. In appreciation of your service, dedication to the City of Galt, I present you with this plaque to commemorate your time as Vice Mayor of City of Galt. I really appreciate you, that you stepped in the plate when I was not well, when I was something else doing, and you went some events. And you also, when I have a conflict of interest, you work, you ask me, I really appreciate your service. So you, that plaque, you might already receive at your home.
I did, and City Manager Heinz delivered it this evening, and thank you, Mayor Sandu. I, I think we did a pretty decent job throughout the year, filling in and covering each other when we needed to. And, you know, kept, kept the ship moving among all of the issues that were going on, COVID, and hiring a city manager and all of those things. So thank you so much for your service. I know we're going to hear about you here in a second, but thank you for your service, and I want to also take the quick moment to briefly congratulate the two new council members.
Thank you, and I also like to take the opportunity to make a very short statement. Last year around this time, my fellow council member chose me as a mayor of Galt. It was an honor, and I was looking forward to using my experience and leadership skills. I had no idea at that time what 2020 will look like. We started off with the year with ransomware cyber attack, which limited access to the city phones, website, and emails. Shortly after, the nation was dealing with emerging virus known as COVID-19. With the rapidly evolving situation, social distancing, my mask mandate, and travel restrictions, and even a toilet paper and travel restriction shortage took the nation. As the number of cases increased, shutdown of our local businesses began. Many lives have lost, many jobs have been lost, and many businesses did not survive through this pandemic. It has been an extremely hard and challenging year for most, but I'm hopeful we will have a better days ahead. Thank you for all the city department directors, employees, union representative for all their continued hard work. Thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity. And last, but certainly not least, thank you for our citizen who put me here in the first place two years ago when they elected me as a city council. I will continue, continue to be your voice. I will forever be grateful for this opportunity. I was an absolute pleasure to serve as your mayor. Thank you very much. You guys, everybody gave me the opportunity so that I was the last one year as a mayor. Thank you. Oh, the, no, I think next term is Mr. Heinz.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate the two members, two new members of our council. I look forward to having you on the team. And we've got some interesting cadre of issues coming before you in the, in the upcoming months. And so the staff and I stand as ready to help, help you and the other members of the council succeed in, in moving us forward. I wanted to say a couple of words about Mayor Sandu's tenure as mayor. And I wanted to give the members, the current members of the council and the public a sense of what this group, the mayor and the five-member council during 2020, the work that they've done. During 2020, the mayor and the four other council members have passed 89 resolutions and eight ordinances. We have responded promptly and properly to the COVID-19 pandemic by passing a local emergency. And also suspending payments for transient occupancy tax, which went to help out some of our businesses that are, that are being impacted by the virus. We also authorized a emergency temporary outdoor dining use permit to allow the restaurants to use the, the public and private space outdoors to, to meet the distancing requirements. Additionally, the mayor and, and the, and the council members authorized the staff to work with legislative leaders to modify the current deed restrictions on the Galt market property. Authorized an agreement to continue the, authorized an agreement with SAC County to continue the South County Transit Link Service Program and cost-sharing agreement. We've adopted a brand-new technology use policy. As the mayor mentioned, we came out, we just came out of a very severe ransomware attack late last year, and so we have, was a bit of a challenge earlier in the year, and we are still recovering from that, but we have gotten, I think, gotten over the hump for the most part. The, the mayor and the council members also formed the Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 and 2020-2, and so we now have two CFDs. One of the more, one of the even, I would say even, I would call it the most significant accomplishment during the mayor's tenure is the approving of the fiscal year, the biennial budget of 2021 and 2122. That budget process was difficult, given the, given the decisions that needed to be made. But the mayor and this council and that council were able to pass the balanced budget and move us forward. The mayor, the mayor and that particular council also indicated or also approved the job specification and salary grade for the assistant city clerk, also established the economic development manager. And that council and the mayor also is responsible for yours truly being here in this seat, and so for that, I am truly grateful. The mayor and the council authorized a two-year agreement that brought the senior nutrition lunch program, Meals on Wheels, to the Chabala Center. And there just, there's a couple more things here. We, we wanted to also recognize that the mayor and that, and that, that particular council authorized the agreement to complete the groundwater sustainability plan. And also approved the construction contract for the Hesmond Park improvements, and also established the green zones for infill development. So I think all in all, it was a very productive year during Mayor Sandu's tenure as mayor. We look forward to 2021 and another productive year from the Galt City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Whatever you, you mentioned is, is great. I would enjoy for one year as a mayor. And now, we would like to move the next agenda item because every year we select a new mayor, election of the mayor. City, city attorney, or Tina Hubert?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So the election of the mayor is something we do every year now, and the city clerk oversees the election of the mayor. The mayor selected by one, the council for a one-year term. As in your past, the clerk will open the nominations. Any council member may nominate. Any council member, you can even nominate yourself. A second to the nomination is not required. After the nominations are closed, the city clerk will close the nominations and call for the vote on the mayor's election. The nominations will be voted on in the order the nominations were made. So the first council member receiving the vote of a majority of the council will be the mayor, so that's, if the first nomination that's received, receives a majority vote, that, first, that council member will become the mayor, and then the mayor will then oversee the nomination and selection of the vice mayor. And with that, I will hand it back to Mayor Sandu and the city clerk.
Tina Hubert.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we'll get started. So I hereby open the nominations for mayor.
Sean Farmer, as the mayor.
Any other nominations? I hereby close the nominations. So I will start with Councilmember Sandu.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer. So that is a majority vote, so Sean Farmer is the mayor.
Congratulations, Sean Farmer.
Thank you, Mr.
And now as mayor, you oversee the nomination to the vice mayor, so you can open the nominations and the process is the same.
Okay. I would like to open the nominations. Anybody would like to nominate someone as the vice mayor? I would like to nominate Paul Sandu as the vice mayor. Does anybody would like to have a second nomination?
I will second that.
What I was meaning, Councilman Vandenberg was, does anybody want to have an additional nomination for the vice mayor? We don't need a second. Nobody? Okay, we will close the nomination for the vice mayor. Ms. Hubert, if you could take a roll call, please.
Okay, I was getting everyone's titles. Okay. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Just to clarify, we're voting on vice mayor, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Papino.
Yes.
And Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Sandu, on being the vice mayor. And thank you again, Mr. Lozano, for serving as vice mayor for the past year. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Happy to serve.
I think I'll need a moment, Tina, to receive an email that you'll be sending, I think.
Yep, you should, you should have it, so let me know if it didn't go through.
You might retake a public comment on this.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, Mayor Farmer. A former council member Lamson would like to be heard by the group. She wanted to express her appreciation for her tenure as council member and, and wanted to, I wanted to make sure it was okay with you.
That would be fine, yes.
Okay, great. Rose, would you make the appropriate moves, please?
Paige, go ahead.
Yeah, I had to come in.
Yeah, I had to come in by my phone because once you kick someone out of a meeting, they cannot get back in per Zoom rules. Anyway, sorry about that. We thought we were going to have a moment to say goodbye. And then boom, we were out. So just want to take the time to thank the council for all your hard work. Thank the city staff. We have one of the hardest working city staffs that I've had the pleasure of working with. Excuse me. We have a lot coming up. We haven't built a lot the four years I've been on council, so it's time to get moving. And I really look forward to the excitement and the things that are going to happen and the success we're going to have. And just thank you guys for four wonderful years and good luck. And remember to keep the, the needs of the whole city, not just your friends in mind. And think about what our city needs as a whole. God bless everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lamson. And again, we appreciate your service. Thank you. Tina, are we now moving on to item? E. Presentations? Actually, I'm sorry, Item D. Agenda approval additions and or deletions.
Tina, you're still, Tina, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I, yes, we are moving on, but I just want to state there was no public comment for the mayor selection.
I have no public comment on the attendee side.
Thank you. And I ask for you guys' patience because the script that I have, I have to have on the screen at the moment along with the meeting. So I wasn't able to actually print it out just yet. So bear with me on that. Okay, before we go on to, actually, so we're on Item D. Agenda approval additions or deletions. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull from the, or move on the agenda or pull from the consent?
Mr. Mayor, I do not want to pull the consent, any item, but I like to clarification. There was an item on the warrant. I ought to talk to the city manager if he can explain to the public because there was a check number was issued, tech number two, one, six, zero, eight, eight to issue to my wife. I just want to transparent as a clarification, I would like to ask city manager if she can explain, explain to the public.
Yeah. And we will, I believe we can get to that when we get to the consent count.
Thank you.
Okay, next, actually, I'm going to ask that I move my council comment from the end of the meeting up. I wanted to, I had written something as a memorial for someone who had passed away. It was important in the community. And I would ask the mayor if I was, be able to do that. So since I am the mayor, now I will go ahead and move my comment up to this time. So as you may know, or some of you that may not know, we recently lost Ms. Doris Louise Lowell Dowdell, who is a very important figure in the community. And she was the great aunt of our supervisor Donna Tully. And I was able to attend her last birthday party on August of this last year at the Care Home here in Galt. Was a great celebration. We had some of our first responders and our, and some, some officials came. I was able to go and present a proclamation from the city council declaring August the fifteenth as Louise Dowdell Day. But I did write up a, some things here about her I wanted to read. And I want to do this at the beginning of the meeting so that everyone could hear it. Doris Louise Lowell Dowdell, born August fifteenth, nineteen eighteen. Doris Louise Dowdell was born August fifteenth, nineteen eighteen. She did not like being called Doris, so everyone just referred to her as Louise. Nineteen eighteen, the year Louise was born, saw the Model T Ford replace the horse as a form of transportation. The famous Red Baron fighter ace was finally shot down. And the world saw the end of World War One in December of that year. Nineteen eighteen was the start of the first great Spanish flu pandemic. Little did Louise know that she would live to see another such event more than a hundred years later. Nineteen eighteen saw President Woodrow Wilson, the ratification of prohibition, and the constitutional amendment allowing women to vote. Now, I don't know if Louise was into politics or if she cared who was the president, but she did live to see eighteen different presidents serve our country. She was even forty-four years young when President Kennedy was assassinated. In her childhood, Louise attended grammar school at the Brown School in the Galt area, which later became the Alabama School, later to become a graduate of Galt High School in nineteen thirty-seven. She was the second oldest living Galt High alumni, if you can believe that, the second. As a young girl, she was the first queen of the Galt County Fair, and she rode her horse Bill in the Galt Parade. Louise was very involved in the community, and she was a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Louise was twenty-three years old when Pearl Harbor was bombed and World War Two began for our country. She has actually lived through every conflict of the twentieth century. Louise worked at several places in Galt, including the Giant Orange Stand and later at the Galt Post Office for many years. Her involvement in her hometown's history began as a charter member of the Galt Historical Society, becoming its first president in nineteen eighty-seven. She held that office on six separate occasions. As the president, she started the monthly newsletter, formulated committees to record local history, and spearheaded the first efforts to form a local museum for Galt, which culminated in the purchase and renovation of the Ray House. She started the preservation of old Galt photos, an effort that has still continued to this day. Even in the later years of her life, she still participated. She wrote periodic articles for the newsletter on local history, and she still served on the Executive Board of the Historical Society until two thousand nineteen at the age of one hundred and one. Her remarkable memory has helped preserve much of Galt's history. Louise was not only instrumental in the preservation of our city's history, but she witnessed much of it through her own eyes firsthand. Her efforts have left an impression on her city that will remain for generations. Louise was full of smiles the day I last saw her on her birthday. And she was talking about many of her memories, including her horse Bill, which I thought was hilarious. Who names their horse Bill? She will be missed by all that knew her, including her family. So I, on behalf of myself and the City Council of Galt, offer our condolences to your family and congratulate Louise on her life well-lived. So I would thank you for allowing me to read that. Does anybody have any comments or I can move on to the next item?
I, I have a question, just point of order. Are we going to bring back the comments by city council in order on the agenda later? Or do we do that now?
I actually just moved mine up. We can still have yours at the end. Or we can have yours now. What would, what do we, what do we need to do, Tina? You're muted, Ms. Hubert.
You're muted, Tina.
I'm sorry. I'm, we can just leave Mayor Farmers at the beginning. If you don't choose to move yours or you will go in order again at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I think that was kind of a special piece. So yeah, I, I would prefer to do it in order on the agenda for everyone at the end.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. All right, our next item is going to be Item F. Public comment. Ms. Hubert?
Under Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronic, electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero two web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight, two, 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 six, three, eight, one, two, nine, three, webinar ID eight, two, 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 six, three, eight, one, two, nine, three.
Tina, do we have any public comment?
I do have two public comments. The first one is from OMAC. Good evening. I recently became aware of Atwater, California Sanctuary City for Business Stance. Has the city council been aware of this and considered adopting the same stance for Galt to protect our business owners? The second comment is from Ryan Montgomery. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to address you all regarding who will eventually become our next police, chief of police. I know this position is not permanently filled yet, but will be sometime in the near future. I am sure that you will be through when you choose, thorough when you choose. I wanted to request as a Galt resident that you appoint someone that takes their oath seriously and also takes the Constitution seriously. Galt's chief of police needs to be somebody that is interested in serving and protecting rather than participating in unconstitutional orders and government overreach. This community is hurting, and so are small businesses. The community of Galt spoke very clearly with their vote last month about what direction they want the city council to take this, this great town. I also voted for these two new city council members. Our community voted for people we believe would uphold the Constitution and not simply blindly follow whatever Supreme Leader Newsom thinks we should. I am confident that the right people were elected for this job. I love and support the thin blue line. My dad is a retired police officer, and many of my friends are police officers, and each of them take their oath seriously. Our law enforcement needs serious, responsible leadership that values and upholds the Constitution as well as the Bill of Rights instead of being another Newsom henchman. Our governor does not practice what he preaches, and there is no shortage of evidence of this. Asking our citizens to follow unconstitutional orders that our leaders themselves will not follow is both outrageous and hypocritical. I do not personally know any of the candidates that you will consider, but I want, but I wanted to make sure you would please keep in mind that the Constitution and the Bill of Rights are not suggestions. They are the foundation of our country. Please ask tough questions when it comes time to choose the next chief of police for our great town. It is very clear what our town wanted, given the two new city council members that will be taking their oath tonight. Our town needs strong leadership, not someone who will break their oath. I now speak for the majority of Galt when I say that. Thank you for your time and have a great evening. That's it for written public comments.
Mayor, I have a couple of public comments on the attendee side.
Go ahead, Rose. Thank you.
First one will be Kami Martin. Kami, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council and staff. First, I want to congratulate Kevin Papino and Jay Vandenberg on their successful elections. I'm excited to see what the future holds for our city. Thank you both for taking this on. And again, congratulations. To one of the two members of the Measure R Police Oversight Committee who would participate in the report, or who could participate in the report out for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. I declined to do so out of concern for its accuracy. Having been appointed by council to provide oversight on the spending of taxpayer dollars and ensure monies are spent properly and legally, I did not feel I could give any stamp of approval on the report out in good faith, despite the budget having been previously cleared by both city staff and professional auditors. During our last Measure R Committee meeting on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, I noticed an error in a financial report, that report being the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen city budget. And so I asked for clarification during the meeting, not once, but twice. Both times, finance confirmed that the information being presented was accurate. A member of the Police Department's administration also asked immediately following me regarding the same issue and was met with the same response that the information being presented was accurate. Following the meeting, I immediately made a public record request to obtain information to further clarify what I believe to be inaccurate. At issue was that the city budget showed that we spent money on a detective in Measure R. I knew that we had not spent salary or benefits on a detective in Measure R because there is no detective in Measure R. Further, I knew this because I keep my own records of Measure R positions and knew that not only did not, did, knew that we did not have anyone in the Narcotics Task Force position in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We have not had one for some time and still do not. The committee was supposed to have our next quarterly meeting on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. However, it was delayed due to this issue, and we were told it would be rescheduled to November. As we can all see, November has come and gone. To some, the issue of misallocating some two hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred sixty dollars may not be a big deal. But when I was appointed to this position, it was not a responsibility that I took or do take lightly. This is my responsibility as a committee member and as a citizen. These are my tax dollars and those of my neighbors. Monies are put into a separate fund to be purposely kept separate from general fund monies so that money is not commingled and it is not spent on things that shouldn't be. I had no intention of bringing this issue before council. Frankly, I expected the budgetary issue to be remedied, a meeting to have been rescheduled for last month with the announcement that a budget amendment was completed and the monies returned to the proper fund, Measure R. I fully understand and appreciate that this was an unprecedented year. It has been for all of us. But this issue was brought to the attention of the city on August twenty-sixth, and it is now December third, over three months. Three months of my pushing and prodding. I serve on the Oversight Committee, but no one will, nor should they ever have to conduct the level of work that I have done to ensure that we are in compliance with the ordinance. The way that the measure was drafted intended for oversight to be simple, not some convoluted shell game. Additionally, on more than one occasion, I've made staff aware of my concerns with their newly implemented method of expenditure reporting, as is required by Measure R, and their methods lack of transparency to both the Measure R Committee and the public. Something needs to change as not only is what we're doing not working, its outcome is clearly unacceptable. So I am here before you, sort of. A member of the committee and a concerned citizen advising council, as is my duty, that this committee is hamstrung. Look at all I had to do and still ended up having to bring it before the dais to ask for help in having it reconciled. I am asking that you take action to ensure that the two hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred sixty dollars is put back to where it is legally required to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami.
Is there any further written comments, Rose?
Yes, the next person is Grace M. Grace, go ahead and mute your mic. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Grace Molson. I am the treasurer of the Galt Sunrise Rotary. And because of the COVID, we've had some issues. As council members and citizens of Galt know that we usually do a community dinner for the community that's free. Unfortunately, due to COVID, that's not going to happen this year. I would like to read a letter from Mark King, our president, to inform both council members and the citizens of Galt what we are going to be doing in lieu of the dinner. This is written by our president. The Galt Sunrise Rotary Club wishes to thank the community for their support of the Christmas Community Dinner over the past twelve years. We have graciously donated turkeys, canned goods, stuffing, and more towards this annual event. Over the years, you have helped provide us, provide eighteen thousand meals to the community. With the rise in the COVID-19 cases and in keeping with the love and concern we have for Galt, we are not going to be able to have the community dinner this year. However, in lieu of the event, we will be distributing Christmas dinner boxes with a turkey and all the trimmings for a holiday meal at home. The boxes will be distributed at the Sunshine Food Pantry, five seventy-one C Street, on Saturday, December nineteenth, from nine to eleven P A.M. Because of the volume, we are asking residents to reserve a box. There are three ways that you can do this. You can email galsunrise@gmail.com. Repeating, galsunrise@gmail.com. Or you can send a text message to two, zero, nine, seven, three, zero, six, four. Or you can send a text message to 209-730-6425. Repeating, 209-730-6425. Or you may sign up in person at the Sunshine Food Pantry on December 10. On behalf of all of us, thank you, and we hope to see you on December 19. Sincerely, Mark Edward King, President, GALT Sunrise Rotary Club. Since we serve 1,000 people, it'd be a little difficult for us to really do a drive-through. We had that in the works. We were planning it. That's not panning out, so this is our alternative. I did receive through the Gmail a not-so-nice thing of asking what we're going to do about the homeless. Well, unfortunately, we know homeless do not have facilities to cook or do anything like that. We are talking about doing something between the 19th and Christmas, but it'll be just a group of us providing, whether it be a cold turkey sandwich to them or something like that. We haven't made any formal decisions on that. I just want to get it out there that we are doing something for the community this year. We did not want to cancel. That was on the agenda, and we decided that was not going to happen. So on behalf of the Rotary Club, I thank you for the time to get this announcement out. And if the council has any questions or comments, I'll entertain them.
Thank you, Ms. Molson. I would just ask if you could send that information to our city clerk. If you could email that information to her, the the address, the hours, and the text numbers and all of that so that we could post that on the city's social media, if you could do that for us.
Okay, I shall. I'll do that. She'll have it tomorrow morning.
Thank you, and thank you for all that the Rotary does for GALT. Appreciate that.
You're very, thank you. You're welcome, Sean. Thank you very much for the time. Have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you, Grace. And there is no other public comment on the attendee side.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rodiker. We'll now move on to the next agenda item. Reports by city council on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Is there a certain order that we should go in on the names, so I know? Tina?
There's a certain order. You can start with the vice mayor if you'd like and move around and with himself.
Okay. Vice Mayor Sandu?
No, nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I do have something to report from the Sacramento Council of Governments meeting on the 17th of this last month. There, it was pretty light agenda, but we did talk about the next generation transit strategy and seeking stakeholder input. As as you may know, we've talked about this a few times, that the state has required our region to reduce greenhouse gases by 19%, which for most people doesn't sound like a lot, but 19% in reducing greenhouse gases is pretty significant and almost unattainable. In fact, I think it is unattainable unless the state pitches in and helps. So anyhow, we are at the SAICOG board. We are enlisting the help of a group to assist in seeing what we can do to get transportation folks back using public transportation. Even before COVID-19, there was a reduction in public transportation. We believe that one of the strategies to use to attain our metropolitan transportation plan and the sustainable community strategies that we approved last year about this time is to get more ridership on in the region. And so we had a presentation on that, and we're going to be moving forward. And so that's that. That was the big item on on our agenda. There, the the goal really is is to advance economic prosperity and connect communities, even in our own community, trying to connect people by either public transportation or bicycle or walking and provide opportunities for those those things to happen more fluidly and complete streets type of concept. And then and then really working to make places more vibrant in our region. And so that's kind of the goal, and they're going to look to get stakeholder input, you know, get a background of the conditions that are going on right now and then develop a strategy to move forward. So that's that's kind of the big thing going on. Like you said, at SAICOG, we'll be looking at budgets beginning of the first year and some other issues related to race equity and inclusion as it relates to transportation and SAICOG agency. And so more on that as as it develops. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano, and thank you again for serving on the SAICOG. I know that it's it's one of our most important boards that one of us can represent, and you've been doing that for your entire term so far. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Papinow?
Happy to be here. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir, and again, welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report, but I am curious who will pick up the positions. Reagan?
Would you like to?
Boards and the boards that were previously spots that were previously taken by Paige Lamson and Kurt Campion, who will be taking those and?
That will actually be on the next agenda, December 15.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. I have nothing to report. I do have a library authority board meeting this Thursday. I will report to following meeting on the results of that. So if no one has anything else, we will move on to the next item, which would be the consent calendar. Information consent calendar items H1 through 3.
Mister Mayor, I wanted to just let you know that Vice Mayor Sandu did not want to pull the warrants item, but he wanted me to clarify one of the checks that was written. And so I wanted to see how we wanted to handle that. And so Tina Kimberly, Mayor Farmer, I just just needed an opportunity to to make a comment. I don't know where we where we want to do it in this particular item.
You can just do that now and just answer this question about the particular warrant and then proceed to the motion without pulling the item.
Okay, great. Okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, great. So I wanted to report that check number 216088 issued on November 10, 2020 was issued to Amy Sandu. And this was for a rental. She was looking to rent the Littleton Center for an event. However, due to the COVID pandemic, that event never materialized because of the requirements by the county and by the city and for these types of events. And so this event was to occur back in March. And as I mentioned, it did not materialize. And so we refunded her security deposit and rent on November 10. And we wanted to make sure that there was clarity and transparency around this transaction because Amy is the mayor's wife. I'm sorry, the vice mayor's wife. It's going to take me a couple of minutes to get Mayor Sandu out of my out of my psyche here.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor Sandu?
And yes, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendars items H1 through 3? Excuse me, who was the motion?
I did.
Moved by Councilmember Papinow, seconded by?
I'll do a second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Next is scheduled matters. Public hearing. Is that right, Tina?
And there are none.
Thank you. Moving on to our regular calendar, item J1 Coronavirus COVID-19 Update. City Manager, Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of GALT has seen a 19% increase in COVID cases over the past two weeks, with Sacramento County recording a 21% increase over the same period. COVID-related deaths in GALT have not changed. Sacramento County, however, has seen a 9% increase in deaths since we last reported out on November 17. This is a similar trend to what's happening throughout California with over 99% of the state's population now in the most restrictive tier of the state's blueprint for a safer economy, the purple tier. Governor Newsom warned yesterday that strict, that another strict stay-at-home order may be necessary to curb the virus spread in counties that remain in the purple tier. He indicated that without additional intervention, hospitalizations could triple in a month, and California could hit 112% ICU capacity by Christmas Eve. Hospital and ICU capacities continue to be the most concerning issues at this point in time. The governor did allude to additional modifications in the order for businesses to continue operating, but has not specified what those might be. We will continue to update you as we learn more on the state restrictions as well as the conversations happening at the county level related to the enforcement of the public health order. As you know, we continue to offer testing every Thursday at the Chabala Center here in GALT. Information regarding testing can be found on the front page of the city's website. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Does anyone have any questions regarding the report? If no one has any questions, I do have one question, Mr. Heinz. It was brought to my attention that possibly that our testing here in GALT will come to a close soon because of our contract with whoever's doing the testing. Can you comment on that?
I'm going to let Director Solis pipe in on on that particular arrangement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, the contract runs currently through December 31. They are working to extend that, but we have not heard anything back. They they will, as soon as we know, will pass that information on to you. But right now, we only have a contract through December 31.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
And if I if I may add, clearly the way things are going with the surge and the county's persistence and the state's persistence in this particular issue, I would not be surprised to see that that contract continued in some form.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. There's no further council comments on this item. Would like to move to our next item. Item J successor.
Confirm, Mayor Farmer, there's no public comment first before we move on on the COVID-19 item. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina, do we have any public comment on this item?
No written public comment.
I have no public comment on the attendee side as well.
Thank you. Proceeding on to next item, successor agency. We will now adjourn to join the meeting of the city council, adjourn the meeting of the city council to the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of GALT. Roll call of members, please, Tina?
Board Member Sandu?
Yes.
Board Member Lozano?
Here.
Board Member Vandenberg?
Here.
Board Member Papinow?
Here.
Board Member Farmer?
Here. Public comment. Is there any public comment for the successor agency?
I have no written public comment.
I have no public comment on the attendee side.
Thank you, Ms. Rodiker. Move on to item J3 Consent Agenda. We have just one item on the successor agency consent agenda, approval of the minutes from November 3, 2020 successor agency meeting. We have a roll call vote of the successor agency board for the consent agenda. We'll move for approval.
Need a motion first, please.
I'll move for approval.
I'll do a second.
Item moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Sandu?
Here.
Board Member Lozano?
Aye.
Board Member Vandenberg?
Aye.
Board Member Papinow?
Aye.
Board Member Farmer?
Aye. Motion approves 5-0. Next item, J4 Departmental. We will now move to the next item and successor agency agenda approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule or OPS for the period of July 2021 to June of 2022. And we have a staff report on this?
Thank you. Claire Tyson, Finance Director, welcome all of you. This particular agency, GALT Successor Agency to the Redevelopment, is a wind-down organization that provides certain activities. One of those is an annual report that comes before you and then before an oversight board of the county. This item is the annual submission of recognized obligations. These are part of the wind-down of the redevelopment agency. And with us tonight is Suzie Kim. She is our consultant who provides service to the successor agency. She is from RSG, and she is on the line to present this item for you.
Yes, hello. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Suzie Kim with RSG. And today we're asking you as the successor agency board to approve the recognized obligation payment schedule or ROPS, an administrative budget for fiscal year 2122. And to provide a little background, the GALT Redevelopment Agency was dissolved in 2012 after state law dissolved all redevelopment agencies in California, and the city elected to become the successor agency and is responsible for winding down any redevelopment agency obligations that existed before dissolution. And state law requires the successor agency to prepare an annual ROPS and administrative budget to request funding for payments owed in the upcoming fiscal year. And ROPS obligations are funded by former redevelopment area property tax revenues as well as other sources like interest, loan repayments, and bond proceeds. So successor agency staff and consultants have prepared the ROPS that requests 1.7 million in enforceable obligations. 1.6 million is requested from RP-TTF or Property Tax, and approximately 118,000 is requested from bond proceeds. The majority of the requests, or 1.4 million, is to make bond debt service payments and required annual trustee and reporting fees related to the bonds. And the ROPS also requests a $250,000 administrative cost allowance, and this is the maximum permitted by law. And that administrative allowance covers things like staff time spent administering obligations and preparing reports such as the ROPS, as well as consultant, legal, and auditor fees. And staff has prepared a $250,000 administrative budget that details these estimated costs. The ROPS also includes a report of cash balances for fiscal year 2018-19, and it concludes that there were roughly $80,000 in other funds. And if DOF concludes, or sorry, the Department of Finance concludes with this amount, and that will be applied to fund ROPS 2122 obligations. So if the ROPS is So if the ROPS is approved tonight, it will be submitted to the Sacramento Countywide Oversight Board for their consideration at a January eleventh meeting, and then it will be submitted to the California Department of Finance for review by February first, and that is a deadline required by law. And then the Department of Finance will make a determination by April fifteenth. So that concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Any of the council members have a question for Ms. Kim or for Ms. Tyson? If not, then I will move on to public comment for this item. If you are watching this and you would like to ask a comment, this would be the time to raise your hand in the Zoom webinar if you would like to speak. Ms. Hubert, do we have any public comment or any hands raised?
I have no hands raised on the attendee side.
And I have no written public comments.
Thank you. So if there's no further comments by city council, I'll bring this item back to the city council and the successor agency for the discussion questions. So I'd like to entertain a motion to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July two thousand twenty-one through June of two thousand and twenty-two, OPS twenty-one, twenty-two pursuant to the requirements of the redevelopment dissolution law. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Papinow, did you second that or no?
No, I was.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Could I please have a roll call vote, Tina?
Board member Sandu.
Aye.
Board member Lozano.
Aye.
Board member Vandenberg.
Aye.
Board member Papinow.
Aye.
Board member Farmer.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Ms. Kim and our Budget Manager, Michelle Neely, for their work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire, to you and your staff. We're now adjourn the joint city council successor agency meeting and reconvene to the regular Galt City Council meeting. Note that all our council members are present. We move on to our next item. City Clerk's report. Tina?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Moving on to next item, item O, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report myself tonight. I'm going to go through the directors, and they will let you know if they have anything to report. Let's start with our Human Resources Directors, Stephanie Van Stein.
Yes, good evening, Council. I have nothing to report this evening, but I would like to welcome the new council members, Councilmember Papinow and Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you. Very good. Director Armando Solis.
Quite a bit, so if you guys can bear with me a little bit. First of all, I'd like to thank a couple of people. Our parts maintenance group, Armando Morales, has been doing a great job. We're putting up Christmas decorations. We put up our Christmas tree. We have our landscape maintenance that we're doing. We don't have all our equipment or all of our staff, but I think we're still doing a great job on that. So I wanted to let Armando Morales, his crew, Wade Isabel, Ryan Weeks, and Sierra Lopez, give them a shout out and tell them thank you for their hard work. I'd like to thank Kurt Campion and Paige for their work. Welcome Councilmember Vandenberg and Papinow. And then Lorenzo, could you put that picture up for me?
Can you see it?
Yeah, so on November twenty-first, Real Life Church came out and did a workday with the Galt Parks and Rec Department. And I just wanted to thank them for coming out and helping us with our landscape and trimming. So thank you, Real Life Church, for coming out. And then I want to thank the Lions Club for their continued support on Lions Oak Park. And then just a couple more things, our reverse parade is this Saturday, six thirty. I know Councilman Lozano is already RSVP'd. If any of the council members would like to participate, please give me a call, and we hope to see everybody out there. And then Muffins with Santa will be the following Saturday on twelve twelve at the Chabola Center. So I think I've talked enough. Thank you all.
Thank you, Armando. Craig Hoffman, our interim Community Development Director.
Nothing for the council tonight, thank you so much.
Claire Tyson, our Finance Director.
Nothing further to report from here, thanks.
Very good. Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Manager.
Good evening, trying to get my video going here. Congratulations, first off, to Councilmember Papinow and to Councilmember Vandenberg. Also, congratulations Mayor Farmer and Vice Mayor Sandu. Look forward to working with all of you in the next coming year. And as the, just one thing wanted to mention really quick that city manager had touched on was regarding the speech yesterday from the governor. So yesterday, the governor had a press conference, and he did warn that another lockdown may be necessary to curb the spread of COVID nineteen in counties in the most restrictive tier, which is the purple tier, which is what Sac County is actually in currently. He also said that the lockdown could include additional modifications for businesses to continue operating. Didn't really specify what those might be, so we're waiting for additional information. I suspect that later this week we'll have some additional details as to what that might look like. So we are monitoring that, and we'll push that information out to council and to the businesses as soon as we have that feedback from the state. Thankfully, the governor did announce that they have some new state aid programs that they are going to be putting out. This includes temporary tax relief programs. They have a five hundred million dollar grant program that they are announcing, and then there's additional funding for small business loans. So the details of these programs are still being unveiled, so we're following that, and we'll push that out as soon as we have any more information from the state on those programs, and we'll make sure that we communicate that out to our businesses. Lastly, just wanted to give everybody a heads up that our Instagram page was launched on Monday, and if you can, if you do have Instagram, to go follow the city of Galt. Our tag is at cityofgalt. And we will continue to push information out on Facebook and Instagram, as well as our website. And Lorenzo, I know, has been monitoring our LinkedIn account. So we're doing our best to push out what we can to our community members to make sure that they're engaged and have an idea as to everything that's going on in the community. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Interim Brian Callenhouse.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, congratulations to you all. Look forward to working with you this next year. Can't, it's got to be better than this last year, that's for sure. Nevertheless, the Police Department still continues to be engaged where we can in the community, and I just wanted to let folks know about some upcoming events. Actually, tonight, from seven to nine P M. And tomorrow and Thursday, we're going to be participating in the Santa and sirens with Consumers Fire and Elgro Police Department at Headquarters for Fire at one oh one zero five seven three East Stockton Boulevard. There was also an opportunity to do a gift drop-off for our toy drive that is ongoing. That's going to serve over four hundred folks who've qualified for some sort of gift from Santa. In addition, this Saturday, December fifth, between ten and one, the mayor will be having his Cars for Kids Toy Rally. It's going to be a drive-through event due to COVID, and that will be at the Police Department. And so we encourage members of the public who would like to participate in gifting a toy for a child to be there between ten and one. And of course, we'll be participating in the drive-through parade later that evening, or the reverse parade, excuse me. And then you'll notice that even though it's December first, I'm still sporting my, if you can tell in the shade, my goatee that we did for No Shave November. We've authorized staff with an additional contribution to the fundraising effort to continue that process in the month of December, so you will still see our staff doing their best to showcase their best mustache or goatee going forward. It's a little something for the staff after a long twenty twenty. And with that, again, congratulations to the new members and the mayor and vice mayor. Looking forward to working with everybody this next year, thank you.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just echo all the welcomes to Councilmembers Vandenberg and Papinow. Great to have you aboard and look forward to working with you. And, and congratulations to Mayor Farmer and Vice Mayor Sandu. And yeah, just also, you know, thank former council members Lamson and Campion for their service and enjoyed working with them as well. So looking forward to participating in the reverse parade as well for Public Works. So I hope everybody can make it out on Saturday, and we'll see you then. Thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney Kimberly Hood.
I don't have anything specific this evening. I just want to thank Mr. Papinow and Mr. Vandenberg, welcome to the city council, and congratulations to our new mayor, Mr. Farmer, and Vice Mayor Sandu, and that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Very good. City Clerk Tina Hubert, any, anything for the good of the group?
Just also, congratulations to our new council members and our new mayor and vice mayor, and also the outgoing to Councilmember Lamson and Councilmember Campion, and wish them the best.
Very good. Rose Rodacker, any, any comments for the group?
I will echo what everybody else said tonight, welcome aboard to Councilmember Papinow and Councilmember Vandenberg and Mayor and Vice Mayor. And again, I'd like to thank Paige and Kurt for all the years of service to our community. Wish them well.
Very good, very good. And I would also like to echo what the, what you've heard from the team here, that Councilmember Vandenberg, Councilmember Papinow, welcome to the city council. Mayor Farmer, congratulations. Vice Mayor Sandu, congratulations. And of course, Councilmember Lozano, it's always great to have you here as well. This, this, I'm looking forward to a very productive council in the upcoming year. And so I'm excited. And a big thank you to Paige Lamson and Kurt Campion. They did great work while they were on council, and I really appreciate all the work they've done. And again, that five-member council that was in place during twenty twenty will always be sort of emblazoned in my heart because it was that group that brought me here. And so I'm in debt to you all. And then, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz, and thank you for all the comments from the staff and all the information that all of you brought. Appreciate that. We'll now move on to comments by city council or future agenda items. Start with Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to thank you, Paige Lamson, outgoing council member, and Kurt Campion, their service to the city. And I also like to welcome and congratulate you to new council member G Vandenberg and Kevin Papinow. I also like to congratulate the new mayor, Sean Farmer. And I would like to thank you all, the city council member, gave me the opportunity to add another Gfather Vice Mayor. And I also like to thank you staff, doing an excellent job. And they did excellent job during COVID nineteen. Be safe, I know the cases are increasing. I would like to remind everybody, be social distance, be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Vice Mayor Sandu. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I'm gonna repeat a few things that staff talked about, just because they're on my notes, and I can. First of all, Santa and sirens is going to be happening. It's also, it happened tonight, but also on Thursday, the third, at the fire training and center and headquarters in, on East Stockton Boulevard. Like to see as many citizens out there to drive through their, their reverse parade. And, and it's always, always a good event, and the traditional event's always really good, but this, this will, I'm sure, will, will be a great event as well. And I'd like to thank our own Galt citizen Laurel Schamber for, as part of her, her regular duties in the fire department, she organized it, so she does a good job. Would like to thank Armando Solis and his crew for the landscape maintenance. It looks great all around town. I was actually all around town last night, several spots, and, and it's just looking awesome. So thank you so much, Armando, I knew you could pull it off. And appreciate your, your hard work and the staff's hard work for, for all they've done. Kind of on the same lines of Parks and Recreation, I have been continuing to be in touch with the Galt Youth Baseball League, and they are full steam ahead with girls softball. We're organizing the ability to get equipment donated to them and funds donated to them, and so they are moving right along, and I'm sure they're going to do an awesome job this year with softball provided our, our little ones are going to be able to get out and play. And then lastly, I want to thank Ms. Mendez for providing the packet that she provided for the Eat Drink Support Local. I see the stickers all over town, even purchased a few items over the last several weeks that have the little round stickers attached to their bags and things like that. And so the banners we're seeing all over too as well. So thank you for, Amy, for putting that together and working so hard with our local businesses. And so, so that's that. I want to congratulate again councilmembers Papinow and Vandenberg on your successful election. And we look forward to, I look forward to working with you for the near future, and, and certainly look, look to your expertise that you bring to, to help us move forward. And then again, congratulations to the mayor and vice mayor for your leadership roles in this next year. It will certainly be a tumultuous year, I'm sure. We've got a lot ahead of us. And so let's, I'm sure we'll work well together and, and get it done. So thank you very much, and, and again, thank you to all the staff. I wore a tie, as I traditionally do at council meetings, but today I certainly wore one. Can't really tell, but it's a Christmas tie. So everybody have your, have a wonderful holiday. I know Christmas is not for another month or so, twenty-four days, but it is the season, and look forward to a safe season for everyone out there, and appreciate it. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Councilmember Papinow.
Thank you, everybody, for the congratulations and congratulations, Jay, being here, looking forward to working with everybody and being part of the team. And to be redundant, thank you to outgoing council members Campion and Lamson for their service. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, everybody, for the well wishes. I'd also like to thank Kurt Campion and Paige Lamsons for their service the past four years. It's certainly something we should not take lightly. I look forward to working with everybody and learning as much as I can because I like to learn. Hope everybody has a safe holiday. Thank you to the citizens of Galt for your vote of confidence. Thank you to the citizens of Galt for your vote of confidence. That's also not something I take lightly, and I appreciate it very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Well, if that's it from those, the council members, I would just like to close out by again saying congratulations to the two of you and welcome to the team. We look forward to what hopefully will be a better year, but we don't know what the future holds. As Rich said, also again, to Councilmember Campion for his eight years, and to Councilwoman, ex-Councilwoman Lamson for her four years. So just like to say to the community, everybody be safe, have a good holiday season. It's a tough time right now, but try to find some holiday cheer and all that's going on. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting for this evening. Thank you all.
Have a good evening.